I am calling to order the council meeting for Tuesday, February 5th of 2019. If we could all please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Derrick Perry, Rebecca Smith, Heather Lewis, Sonya Sanders.
Here. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from January 15th of 2019? All in favor? The ayes have it. Meeting minutes are approved for January 15th of 2019. Earlier this evening, we had executive session pertaining to real estate, litigation, and personnel matters. At this time, we have no presentations. Vice President Lewis, may I please have announcements?
Yes, ma'am. The announcements for February 5th, 2019 are as follows. Welcome Madeleine Dean to the district office. Her open house will be on Tuesday, February 19th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. She is located at 101 East Main Street, which is the Congressman Boyle's former office. Black History Live is hosted by the NAACP Youth Council. It's going to be here at the Municipal Hall on February 24th at 4:30. There are going to be exhibits, spoken word, and vendors. For more information, you can email narsetownnapacpyc@gmail.com. Again, the municipality is hosting Learn How to Become a Food Truck Owner. The Narsetown Small Business Center will host a workshop on February 27th at 5:30. Registration is required. You can visit narsetown.org for more details. And the Chamber of Commerce Network Meeting. Narsetown Chamber of Commerce will host a networking event on Wednesday, February 20th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Center Theater on DeKalb Street. The event is free for members and $5 per person for nonmembers. Does any other member of council have any other announcements? Councilman Jones?
Good evening. Montgomery County Community College has been recruiting for a manufacturing technician training at the Blue Bell campus. They're looking for young adults looking to learn how to read blueprints, learn basic industrial math, measurements, OSHA training, quality assurance. Gary Hines can be reached at (610) 718-1974 to manufacturing technician training. There is a For My Town event tomorrow evening at Center Theater on DeKalb Street. It is a local mixer with local musicians, artists, community members, and stakeholders. That event starts at 5:30. The Narsetown Area High School Parent-Faculty Club is having a prom fair Saturday, March 30th. They will be collecting prom materials for some of the students. So if you're interested in donating anything related to a prom, you can call the school district (610) 630-5000. There is a job fair, construction job fair, H&amp;K, a large construction company. It will be Saturday, February 16th. They're looking for experienced folks in a variety of fields, heavy diesel mechanics, triaxle drivers, CDL drivers, asphalt paving crew members, water, wastewater tradespeople, and many other labor positions. HK Job Fair, Saturday, February 16th. It's going to be at 282 Lucan Road, Skippack, PA. One last announcement. Montgomery County Health and Human Services will host its annual Black History event at the Human Services Center. That event will take place Wednesday, February 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It is open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any other announcements? That concludes the announcements.
Thank you, Vice President Lewis. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, we do.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. What I want to talk to you about to begin with has to do with a January 17th article in The Times-Hurl with respect to choosing to improve your streetlights. And I had information about a new design, if you will, about streetlights and also hydroelectric that I had sent to Catherine. I was wondering if it had gotten to any of the council people. I'll get back to her and see that you all have a copy of it. Several years ago, in fact, I believe Manager Jones had first come into town, I spoke with Bill Codwell about information I had about putting a hydroelectric generator on a discharge from a sewer plant and the potential that it could produce enough electricity to run a sewer plant in a power outage. Well, I have that information also that was sent along with the streetlights. The other thing is the DCNR grants came out and we're hoping to get some grants to repair some of the stormwater damage to Stony Creek. I'm a member of the Stony Creek Anglers and the Valley Forge Watershed Association. The thing is, all these three involvement could possibly get you points for the Sustainable Community Awards that's out there. I don't know if you all are familiar with that. West Norton just got the silver one. Because I was the Environmental Advisory Council Chair for the first one, I've learned a lot about that. So I'm hoping to bring some of that information to council also. The fish ladder is now under the operation of the Stony Creek Anglers, and we're looking forward to documenting what the shad spawning is this year because that's a big event. In fact, when they were tearing the dams out back in the '90s, there was some paperwork that I had from, I think it was the Riverkeeper, stated it was worth $30 million a year in commerce along the watershed. So that would really be a good thing. The fish ladder is over in Bridgeport, but still the festivities that go along with some of that stuff is really good for community building. There is one other situation that has to do with river safety, and I bring it to you folks because you have public access to the river. And what it boils down to is there is a rock shoal that is dangerous to navigation in the area of Port Indian. It's an old dam that had a rock shoal. Valley Forge Watershed has been working to try to get that safely marked, and we're working with the four separate fire departments to take care of river rescue. And we were really moving forward with respect to the Fish Commission's responsibility and why they have not been marking the channel the past quite a few years. And Senator Rafferty was championing that, and he lost the election. So I'm counted back to square one. But I'm hoping to use the new congressman. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening. Could you please state your name and address here?
Anthony Urick, Rosemont Avenue. I had a couple things that I wanted to bring up. First, is there anyone that has regular contact with PICO in regards to public utilities?
Mr. Urick, just to be clear, this is an opportunity for personal comments. You can provide comments if the waters did raise questions, but there's no obligation by Capitol or my exact responsibility responding to these folks. So it might be better to postpone the hypothetical.
That's fine. Rosemont Avenue is essentially riddled with core drill hole samples, of which it seems PICO or whatever public utility is trying to determine something with the gas lines. The road itself is essentially less road and more patches at this point. And if you walk up the road, which I did Sunday, it was nice out, you can still smell gas. So I don't know if anyone is aware of this, if it's being addressed, but if I'm walking up the road and I'm smelling gas, that tells me that there may be some issue that needs to be addressed, and I don't know if anyone's aware of that, so bring that to light. Additionally, Resolution 19-105, the proposed parking near Elmwood Park Zoo, I was wondering if there would be the use of buyer retention basins and porous asphalt as to protect the already impaired Stony Creek, which is in close proximity to the proposed location of the parking area. And lastly, I had spoken with Mr. Thomas from Public Works at, it was actually in August, three issues regarding crosswalk sign on Main Street at the intersection of Hartramp Avenue. I was just looking to see if there was any progress on that in particular. In addition to the alley that intersects Washington Street off of Rosemont, I was told that a small spot on the apron exiting the alley was going to be patched, as well as the four corners of Rosemont and Washington Street that have no handicap accessibility up to this date. That is all.
Thank you.
There's no more.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, do we have any communications this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Next order of business we have are the appointments, and we'll begin with Resolution 19-106.
Thank you, Madam President. Council, you have before you Resolution 106, which is the appointment of Richard Lockhart to deputy fire chief of the Narsetown Fire Department. With that, I will ask Chief O'Donnell to step forward, and I think you need to go down as well, Madam President. This is a great day, we think, for Narsetown in terms of having a deputy fire chief so that our fire chief now can actually take vacation and have administrative staff on hand to support that vacation. As you all know, Rich has done a great job as one of the ranks of our, I think our stellar fire department with our stellar force, and we're happy to welcome him onboard to the administrative team in terms of supporting Chief O'Donnell in those operations. Chief?
Okay, let's do this correctly. Would a member of council like to make a motion to consider and promote and appoint Richard Lockhart to the newly creation position of deputy fire chief of the Narsetown Fire Madam Secretary, may I please have roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Derrick Perry, Rebecca Smith, Heather Lewis, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution 19-106 is approved and passed.
Richard Lockhart.
Richard Lockhart.
Do you sound miswhere?
Do I sound miswhere?
That you will support?
Support.
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Narsetown?
The Charter of the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania?
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the Municipality of Narsetown.
I will discharge the duties?
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office?
Of my office.
As chief?
As deputy fire chief.
Deputy fire chief.[1147.14][1147.14](laughter) For the Municipality of Narsetown.
For the Municipality of Narsetown.
Fire department.
Fire department.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold?
I will uphold.
Obey and enforce?
Obey and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania?
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the Municipality of Narsetown.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
To a person's race?
To a person's race.
Color?
Color.
Sex?
Sex.
Religious creed?
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
Age.
National origin?
National origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability?
Handicap or disability.
Next order of business we have is Resolution 19-109, in terms of the appointments to boards and committees.
Thank you, Madam President. Council, Resolution 1-09 gives council the authority to appoint qualified residents to serve on Narsetown citizens advisory boards, committees, and commissions. This resolution is for your consideration in the appointment of Mr. Daniel Cowder as a board member, advisory board member for Keep Narsetown Beautiful's Advisory Board with the term expiring December 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Council, any questions or comments? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion for Resolution 19-109, which would appoint Daniel Cowder to the Keep Narsetown Beautiful Advisory Board?
Second.
Madam Secretary, may I please have roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Derrick Perry, Rebecca Smith, Heather Lewis, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution 19-109 is passed and approved. Next order of business we have is from the municipal administrator in terms of the
This item, as council is aware, there is a continuing project that goes on for the rehabilitation and reconstruction of Markley Street. This item before you is for council to authorize us, staff, to proceed in discussions, along with the solicitor, to proceed in discussions with the purchase of about 14,111 square feet of municipal right-of-way along Johnson Highway. It says along Johnson Highway, but it's Johnson Highway in conjunction with the Markley Street project for the PennDOT's purchase of right-of-way. At some point in the future, we will bring an actual purchase document before council for action on that. So at this point, it would just be a simple vote that we require for council to give us authority to proceed with that purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Council, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion authorizing the purchase of 14,111 square feet of municipal right-of-way along Johnson Highway by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for transportation improvements? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it, and that motion is passed and approved. Next order of business we have is finance. Mr. Butts, pertaining to Resolution 19-108 in regards to the fee schedule amendment?
Madam President, members of council, this is more or less a housekeeping measure. We discovered some errors in the resolution adopted by council in December, one dealing with solid waste collection and disposal fees, and the other with towing fees in the police department. So this resolution would correct those errors.
Thank you, Mr. Butts. Council, any questions or comments? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion that would amend the municipality's 2019 fee schedule?
So move.
Madam Secretary, may I please have roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Derrick Perry, Rebecca Smith, Heather Lewis, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution 19-108 is approved and passed. Next order of business we have is code enforcement. Mr. Singh, if you could please take over.
Thank you, Madam President. For council consideration, approval of historical and archetextural review board certificates of appropriateness for the December 2018 meeting as well as the January 2018 meeting. For the December 2018 meetings, we have 239-241 East Main Street, application to install new windows, softits, fascia capping, stucco dormers, and install new shutters. 611 West Elm Street, application to remove existing garage bay door and install new vinyl double-hung windows. 344 East Main Street, application to install new windows in front and rear of property, remove stucco blow windows in front, and restucco wall area to match existing stucco. For the January meeting, 407 West Main Street, application to install new stucco windows, sofa overhang, and signs at 407 West Main Street. And 553 Arch Street, application to install new windows, stucco, and vinyl siding to exterior facade.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Council, are there any questions? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the HARP certificate of appropriateness for the December 2018 meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it. That motion is approved and passed. I'm sorry, Mr. Singh, I did those separately, so I just did 2018. So did you include 2019 addresses as well?
Yes.
Okay, so let me...
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. So, Madam Secretary, so let me correct that, and please strike that. So would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the HARP appropriateness for the December 2018 meeting and the January 2019 meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it, and 2018 and 2019 are passed and approved. Next order of business we have is public safety. Mr. Talbot?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm requesting that council consider a motion to approve Resolution Number 19-110 regarding the designation of three disabled parking spaces. The locations are 726 Noble, 731 George, and 202 Chain Street. The residents at each location have demonstrated that they have physical limitations that make the accommodations necessary. I'm also requesting that we remove a disabled parking space at 538 George Street. It's no longer necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Talbot. Council, any questions or comments? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion that would establish reserved disabled parking spaces at 726 Noble Street, 731 George Street, 202 Chain Street, and remove a reserved handicap space at 538 George Street?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it, and that motion is approved and passed.
Shouldn't have been roll call?
I'm sorry, you are absolutely correct. No one else picked up on that. Thank you. Madam Secretary? Roll call.
I'm sorry.[1764.73][1764.73](laughter) I thought somebody else was going to do it. Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Derrick Perry, Rebecca Smith, Heather Lewis, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution 19-106 is approved and passed. Would a member of council like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.